Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, August 5th, 2024 at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for August 5th, 2024. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Thank you. Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our proclamation tonight is National Health Center Week.
All right, thank you, Adrian. I believe we have Mr. Chad Wolbers and possibly several others here to accept this proclamation this evening.
Do I need to state my address? This is my first proclamation.
I mean, we know where you work.
Yeah.
Actually, maybe you can mention that for us.
So Chad Wolbers, President/CEO of DAR Group Consulting, and tonight I'm here in the capacity of interim CEO for Crescent Community Health Center. And with me?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Malver. I'm a community health worker at Crescent.
Can I share it?
My name is Irene Mauan, community health worker for the Pacific Islanders.
Yeah, so just delighted to be here tonight. Actually, this is my very first day by myself without my training wheels and partner, Gary Collins. He's actually making his way to North Carolina as we speak, and just want to commend and recognize Gary for an incredible job that he did since 2019. I like to think that's in part because I was on his search committee, but just did yeoman's work. And since that time that he's been with us in 2019, we've moved from 70 employees all the way up to 150. So pretty remarkable. You might recall our old building across the street there. We're now in our new digs at 1690 Elm Street. We started two floors. We're occupying every single floor save for a small coffee shop and a physical therapy practice. So the growth has been tremendous. I think Kayla was telling me that we are up to 10,000 unique and individual patients, making a huge difference for this community, and could not be more proud of that. In fact, we serve a very diverse clientele. 10% of our patients speak either Spanish or Marshallese. So pretty remarkable, and I don't know what we would do as a community without Crescent Community Health Center. So thank you for recognizing us tonight via this proclamation, and I didn't know if you wanted to share any thoughts at all.
So I represent the Hispanic community. Y me gustaria darre las gracias como parte de mi comunidad. Ha sido muy grandioso tener a Crescent y que nos apoyen tanto en el área de Dubuque.
Ya cuelga tainai Irene, elabtaba camololalansken yenina man. Y konono enochchun yo mei pogodokainiken rumazal, Pacific Islander Health Project, lauets aynanin camolol. Thank you very much. Komol tada.
Yes, once again, thank you for the support of the city and all our partners, fantastic relationship we've had since 2006, and we look forward to being here for the foreseeable future, thanks in large part to your support.
Well, thank you all for being here to accept this proclamation and obviously for the work that you and your team do every single day, and I see some other members of the team out there too, so thank you for being here to support and looking forward to celebrating National Healthcare Center Week with you. City of Dubuque proclamation: Whereas for more than 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary, and preventative healthcare in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system. And whereas, as the country's largest primary care network, community health centers are the healthcare home for 31.5 million Americans in over 15,000 communities across the nation. One in every 11 people in the United States gets their care in a community health center. And whereas, community health centers are locally owned and operated small businesses that serve as critical economic engines, helping to power local economies by generating $85 billion in economic activity and more than $37 billion in labor income in some of the country's most economically distressed communities. And whereas, National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to celebrate America's more than 1,400 community health center organizations with over 15,000 service delivery sites, including over 3,600 schools. We honor their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth since the first health centers opened their doors more than 50 years ago. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council's staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 4th through the 10th of August, 2024, as National Health Center Week in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and encourage all residents to take part in this week by visiting their local health center and celebrating the important partnership between America's community health centers and the communities they serve. Chad, you can come on up. I think we want a picture here for you. We'll do a picture, Craig. I look very tall in these pictures. Thank you. Thanks.
We'll now move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 2 through 5 of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? I see no one here. Do we have anyone virtually, Corey?
We do not, and I'm also going to invite, I see a caller on the phone, so if I speak too fast at any point and you want to step in, let me know, caller.
Okay, thank you, Corey. And Adrian, nothing from the City Clerk's Office?
No input.
Okay, back to us then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
We will move on to items set for public hearing. We have six. First is set public hearing to approve contract with Tuktara LLC for construction of a single-family home on a city-owned infill lot at 2527 Washington Street for August 19th, 2024. Second is well number seven, Rehabilitation Project 2024 for August 19th, 2024. Third is resolution of necessity for the proposed amended and restated urban renewal plan for the greater downtown urban renewal area version 2024.1 for September 3rd, 2024. Fourth is resolution of necessity for the proposed amended and restated urban renewal plan for the greater downtown urban renewal area version 2024.2 for September 3rd, 2024. Fifth is Community Development Block Grant FY25 Annual Action Plan Amendment Number One setting a public hearing for September 16th, 2024. And sixth is resolution setting public hearing for private lead service line replacement pilot program state revolving fund loan for September 16th, 2024.
Mr. Mayor.
Yourself.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Rousell and a second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
We will move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Our public hearing tonight is resolution approving the proposed urban renewal plan for the Mount Pleasant Place Housing Urban Renewal Area.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council adopt the resolution approving the urban renewal plan for the Mount Pleasant Place Housing Urban Renewal Area. The proposed plan would include a low and moderate income housing development comprised of 16 single-family homes be undertaken in accordance with Chapter 403 of the Iowa Code. The Long Range Planning Advisory Commission has forwarded its recommendation to the City Council, affirming that the plan is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan for development. I concur with the recommendation and respect the request, Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider City Council adopt the resolution approving the urban renewal plan for the Mount Pleasant Place Housing Urban Renewal Area. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? And just a reminder, please, we'll need your name and address.
I'm Susie O'Brien. I reside in the second ward, 1585 Wood Street. So the Mount Pleasant project certainly impacts. My concern is that the people on Wood Street who are going to be rather directly impacted have not had access to really any information. There are going to be traffic issues, there are going to be water issues, there are, let's go back to my notes here. The concept of urban renewal also impacts on our tax base. So I guess what I would like the council to address are those kinds of issues perhaps addressing at a meeting with neighborhood individuals or directing us to the place or to the group or committee that basically has answers to those kinds of questions. That would be it.
Susie, thank you. Thank you very much for your comments.
You bet.
Any other input this evening? We have any virtual input?
We do not.
Thank you.
No input received.
All right, then back to us for discussion or questions. Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Mr. Van Milligan, our citizen mentioned several issues, and it's my impression that the TIF district designation will actually help Habitat for Humanity be successful and to address these issues and other issues. So issues that do come up actually are helped by tonight's council approval. Is that correct?
Yes, and the mayor and city council, after a housing study done in 2022, no, let me get my years straight here, 2023, adopted a set of incentive programs to create more housing because the study done by the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation identified that we were 1,100 housing units short. We consistently have our businesses in our community asking for access to more workers to do that. There needs to be a population growth, and for there to be a population growth, there needs to be a place for people to live. And so we've been implementing that strategy ever since, and I think with some good success. But part of that strategy is to meet the entire range of housing, so from affordable to higher-end housing. And so we have our local partner in Habitat for Humanity who's willing to step up and try and help to accomplish that. But to do it, the policy guidelines that the City Council adopted is that the city will provide financial incentives to make these projects happen, and it's very necessary. You know, this is not just a Dubuque problem, it's a national problem, it's a statewide problem, and not every community is appropriately addressing the problem, but so far, the initiatives that the council has adopted is doing that. And one of those tools that you have to financially help is tax increment financing, so that would be the intent of establishing this area.
And thank you very much. So last time we met with Habitat for Humanity personnel, they expressed, they really would like to reach out to the neighbors and become good neighbors in that neighborhood. So I hope that you continue to reach out to them because they, I think, would like to talk with you, but by increasing their financial strength by using this TIF, many of these questions that our citizen mentioned require money to do, and this is going to help them address that with these financial packages. Would you agree with that?
Yes, and as far as engaging the neighbors, the Habitat for Humanity, now a couple of months ago, did have a neighborhood meeting. I realize not everybody, not every neighbor is able to attend that. And then there also has been already two public hearings, one in front of the zoning commission and one in front of the mayor and city council when this rezoning was approved recently. And as I said, this was reviewed by the Long Range Planning Commission, a group of citizens that you appointed that commission, to determine if it was consistent with the community comprehensive plan, and in their public meeting, which was not a public hearing like the other ones were that I just described, but was a public meeting, determined that it was consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Rousell.
Thank you. This particular project is in my ward, so I've been over there a couple of times, and I know that the Mount Pleasant Home are really excited for this project and the new neighbors that they're going to be getting with the project. And if I recall, and Mr. Van Milligan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this project has already gone through the development review team a couple of times, and Wally mentioned that many times water concerns are better addressed after there is a new housing development than the problems that you had before there were any houses there. So I know that that's something that they look at very carefully when they're doing a development review. I also met with a lot of the neighbors and also the Habitat for Humanity when they had the goats up there, and they just had an open opportunity for neighbors to come and talk to and with them, but I know that the Habitat for Humanity office is very open to any neighbors that need more information so that they can be comfortable and learn together about what this is going to look like in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I would agree with your analysis and your reference to the DRT or the Design Review Team. So while those are not public meetings, it is an opportunity for developers, along with their engineers and architects, to meet with city staff in approximately 10 different departments, from the housing department to the planning department to the fire department to the engineering department and so on, to review the, to make sure that the project will fit the city ordinances and that it will meet all the federal and state requirements, which one of those reviews does include drainage.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions? Discussion? Mr. Sprank, I don't forget about you. Are you, just making sure you don't have anything you want to add?
I do not at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, the only other thing that I'll ask then, Mike, one of the questions that Ms. O'Brien asked was who can residents talk to? So if there are questions still, aside from, I mean, obviously calling Habitat about the project that they are working on, but what about within the city? If people have questions, what would you suggest would be the best place to call?
Yeah, so I would suggest contacting the planning department. Sheena Moon in the planning department, S-H-E-N-A, Sheena Moon, is the one who runs our design review team process, so she has access to all the information about the project and can answer, she can either answer the questions or she can identify the person within our organization who can provide the answer.
Thank you, Mike. And I'm going to make a couple of comments, and you can feel free to correct me if I'm wrong about any of this, and you too, Joe, you know, about when it comes to just the urban renewal plans and tax increment financing in general. You know, I'm starting to hear a little bit more often some questions about how this does impact our taxing in the, you know, our tax authority or tax impact within the city. So, you know, when this does happen, it is true that the city captures the taxes from the other taxing entities that are, that go into our property taxes, so county taxes, school taxes, and all those things, which basically means that what we're doing here is a question of balancing out the risk versus reward of doing those types of things. A city can absolutely overuse the tool that we are talking about using right here, and we've used it quite a bit. We've done quite a bit with housing. Mike, you pointed out very accurately that we've decided to use to strongly incentivize development of housing within our community to be able to make sure that we have the housing that we need. And this is the primary tool that we have to be able to do that, that a city in the state of Iowa has to do that. That said, we do always have to ask ourselves at this desk, you know, how much of this are we going to use? How much are we going to push this? I am of the mind currently, based on the need that we have in our community and based on the way that we use this and the way that we've seen this come before us, that we are definitely not overusing any sort of tax increment financing or tax abatement or any of the tools that we have for us. One of the things that I think is a strong indication of that is our partnership that we have with the Dubuque Community School District and with the Dubuque County Government and NICC and the folks that are capturing some of those, that we are capturing some of those taxes from for a period of time. We talk to them about this on a regular basis, and one of the things that we recognize together is that if we want to increase the amount of housing that we have, we want to increase our population in general, and we want to increase the workforce that we have in this community, this is a tool that can be very useful to do that, that using this will allow us to put more people in place in Dubuque and bring more people into our community, bring more housing, bring more students to the school district, bring more people into the county of Dubuque. And that recognition, I think, from our partners is an important thing to point out here, because I think it could be seen as us taking things from another government entity, but that's not the way that we're working with our partners in other governing entities. We are working very closely with them to make sure that this tool is something that is actually being useful and that we're using it responsibly. I think we are using it responsibly, and I think it's a great incentive to be able to use, to be able to do the things we need to do and provide the housing that we need to provide. There's a later action item that talks a little bit more about that housing, but Mike, I don't know if you have anything to add or correct me on there.
Yeah, well, I don't have anything to correct you, but I appreciate you asking if there's some things I want to add. So one of the things that's really important about it is the rebate of property taxes is only for a certain period of time, whether it's 10 years or 15 years, it depends on the project. And after that, the project goes on the property tax rolls for everybody. So it's just a delay in receiving the property taxes, it's not a permanent stop. And the other thing is, we have proof that these incentives are needed by the fact that before the study was done, we were not getting housing created, and so it was a real struggle for our businesses to find employees. And so we knew we had to provide incentives if we wanted there to be housing, so it's just absolute proof because it wasn't happening before. And the other thing to remember is, when you do the property tax rebate, it's not 100% of the property taxes. So the state does not allow the rebate of any debt levies, so if the county has a debt levy, the school district, either NICC or Dubuque Community School District, or the city has a debt levy, that still gets paid. Also, any levies that were passed by referendum. So for instance, the Dubuque Community School District has what's called an instructional support levy, which is a subsidy to their operating budget. Northeast Iowa Community College has an instructional support levy, a subsidy to their operating budget, both passed by citizen referendum. Those taxes cannot be rebated, those go to the districts. Also, the Dubuque Community School District has what they call the Pebble Levy, P-E-B-L, that's an acronym, and it's for maintenance of school buildings. That is not allowed to be rebated as part of the TIF, so they also still get that levy. And then the other point I would make is, when you increase your population, there's a lot more taxes that get paid than property taxes. So those people shop at stores, they go to restaurants, so they pay sales taxes. Then what happens? You get thriving businesses, so then you get more businesses, they pay property taxes and all kinds of other taxes. So it's not as if it's just a laser focus on one tax that is the revenue source. The revenue source to all the taxing bodies in the city are multifaceted, and we do get those tax revenues right from the beginning.
Yeah, and I appreciate you pointing all that out, Mike. And you know, and the fact too, that I think the way you just described that is a strong indication as well of how thought-out this is. This isn't something that we're just doing as a city. This is something that actually required a lot of thought and preparation in creating incentives like this, and then increasing those incentives. Your point you made about the fact that we have a strong indication, good evidence that these incentives were really needed, that's a perfect point. I think that it's definitely important. And with all that said, you know, we will constantly be watching to make sure that as we do this, we're doing it responsibly. So I think, you know, that just leaves me with the one point that Mr. Resnick already pointed out, that using tax incentives like this actually is something that goes back into the neighborhood and the construction and things that's going on there, the infrastructure that's happening there. It's actually meant to improve the project overall, so I do appreciate that about what we're doing here. Right. Yes, Mr. Resnick?
Just quick, Ms. Carter has been helping a citizen, and I didn't know if that citizen wanted to comment on this issue or not because you came in early, I mean, come in late. Okay, I just wanted to check. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. Okay. So there being no further questions or discussion from us on this, the motion here is to receive and file and, I'm sorry, I lost my paper, and adopt the resolution. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
We will move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the City Council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the City Council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the City Council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Thank you, Adrian, and I see we do have some public input this evening.
My name is Kathy Gorman. I live at 3005 Jackson Street in Dubuque, and I just want y'all to know, I discussed it earlier, I had it first on my list, I'm hearing impaired, I can hear nothing in this room, and I was going to ask why the City Council meetings don't have closed caption on TV, because I watch it at home and I still can't understand it without the closed caption. But she did inform me that at a later date, they show it again with the closed caption. But, you know, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with wanting to be involved, and, and I have questions, and sometimes people don't like when you have questions, but I need to ask them, and that's why I'm here tonight. So I know you can't answer my questions, she told me that, but I can still ask them. So I am going to lay it all out there for you right now, and I'm just going to start with, in the beginning, you know, it's been a year, it's been a year this month that the street in front of my house was closed with the brewing and malting, 30th Street was closed, Jackson Street is closed. There's still a raggedy fence that every time we have a wind or rainstorm, it's in the street, people are driving over it, the signs are falling down, and I know the city is very, very anxious to get them streets open. I also know that the city, and this is just what people have told me, that the city has spent $40,000 just renting signs that the streets are closed, you know, and they want the streets open again. I agree. But at the same time, I'm very, very worried that as soon as the street is open, it's going to be forgotten. You know, it's going to be forgotten, because it's, it was the same way, it was the same way, and I'm the one that started the, the hell raising in the North End. I called the Telegraph Herald and said, we need to have people speaking out about the North End Point area. I put it up on Facebook. I've had hundreds and hundreds of people commenting, and 90% of them are negative because we still feel that we are forgotten. And I'm talking Pinard, Elm, Washington, Jackson, White, Central, you, you won't find big fancy houses in that neighborhood. You'll, you'll be hard pressed to find people who make the median income in Dubuque in that area. You know, it's rental, it's Section 8, there's not a lot of money. But that doesn't mean I have to live opening my front door every single morning, and these are things, it means something to me. You know, my house is paid for, I pay taxes on two streets, I maintain my yard, I plant my flowers, I'm a good neighbor, but every morning I get my paper and I got to look at that war zone over there. And I'm afraid that once that street's open, the city's done, because the street is open. And I have been told by another person, if it's true or not, I do not know, that by law, that's his right to leave that mess on his property, because he wants to sort the bricks from the metal and make the money, the bricks are very valuable. You know, I, every single morning, last week was the first week there was one man over there pushing bricks out of the street, one man on his team, you know, that, that's not right. That's not right. So he's not going to get his $1,000 fine, because there was one man there doing it. And, and it bothers me, because I watched him take down that Knights of Columbus building in seven days. It's down, it's gone, it's cleaned up. They're building a wonderful daycare for the people downtown. Seven days is all it took. It's been a year I've been dealing with this. A year this week, he came up, he said, you live in a fall zone, it's dangerous for you. You know, I mean, I, I had the ball swinging over my house, I had my house covered in dust, I mean, totally covered, everything, my grass, my flowers, my house, my patio set, everything covered in brick dust, and then they all go away. And I'm just afraid that once that street's open, the city's going to be done with it. They're going to say, hey, the street's open, we're all happy, but I'm going to look at that mess for the rest of my life? I mean, have you, have you all just drove out to the Copper Kettle, have a nice dinner, and look across the street at what I see every morning when I get my paper? I open my front door, and there it is, the war zone. And he doesn't have to do anything about that? And I know I'm not supposed to be looking for answers here, so maybe I'm just complaining, but to me, I, and I'm not super educated, you can probably tell by the way I'm talking, but at the same time, I feel like, okay, this isn't a public nuisance anymore. Once the street's open, it's not a public nuisance. Is it a private nuisance? Look up the definitions, it sounds like a private nuisance. You know, I mean, to me, if it affects a small group of people or, or stops any business in the area, then it's a, it's a nuisance. And, and then a city attorney can actually press charges against him. So it's not a nuisance, is what you're saying, it's only a nuisance to me. I know you can't answer me, she told me I can't look for answers, but, you know, I just feel like I'm liable for my house. The weeds at my house aren't, excuse me. What about my home value? I don't live in big fancy houses, million dollar houses, $500,000 houses, they're not in that neighborhood. But what about my home value? Who would buy my house with that across the street? Nobody. So anyway, I feel like that's a loss of value, the loss of my property, you know? Makes me sound like kind of a crabby old woman, that's all right with me. So it's not a private nuisance, and it's not a public nuisance, and this $40,000 that the city's paying for street signs, is that what his fine money will go back to the city to cover some of what they spent for street signs? I don't know. I do know that, you know, I, I live in the North End, I've always lived in the North End, and I look at Flex Steel, and I know it's been sitting there empty for five years. I know there's 16 acres was going to be donated to make a county park up there, and there was a plan, there was a study, and nothing ever became of it. So that's what we're used to. And Riverside Bowl, there was a plan to put apartments out there. It's a weed fest, you know? Pecan House has been a weed fest for 20 years, and there's too many weed fests going on in the Point and in the North End of Dubuque, and I don't want one across the street from my house. But I, I do have a bit of good news, I can tell you one good thing I feel good about. There was a house on the corner of 29th and Pinard, it was a total disaster, it had wash machines in the yard, couches in the yard, the garage door laying in the yard, it was just a mess, tires, and so a few of us started complaining about it. Well, the house is gone, it's all cleaned up, and there's green grass growing there, and it's kind of nice to drive by and not see a wash machine laying in the yard, you know? I'm going to have bricks laying there for probably the rest of my life. How can that be legal for him to do that? People are saying he's within his rights. It's not a danger anymore, it's not a fall zone anymore. Oh, oh, here's one good point I want to make, they did bring in some big machines, started knocking it down again, and they worked for four hours and they all quit and left, and that was three weeks ago, and now, drive by and look, they're all hanging, just hanging, the corners are just hanging off the building. It looks worse than it ever did now, but he said he can't do nothing about it, because the floor has some kind of rods in it, and he doesn't have the equipment to have it fixed, and, you know, there's been one excuse after the next for a year going on up there, so we're pretty used to it in the neighborhood. But I just want y'all to know that if, if I have to stand before all of you, sounding like an idiot, I know, complaining, it's because I care. It's because I care about Dubuque. It's because I care about the North End, because I hate the reputation that the North End has gotten. I was born on Prue Road, I've lived in, on the North End 70 years, you know, and I just hate to see Flex Steel and, and the PAC and Riverside and all these empty Hardee's. You can't even buy a burger in, in, in our whole end of our town, you can't. You know, there's four car watches in less than a mile off the arterial, though. If you go to Freddy's Steak Burgers and drive down less than a mile to Miracle, there's four car watches. How many's in the North End? There's one out by the dairy, that the farmers bring their nasties in and spray them down, so you want to stay away from that one, but there's nothing out there for us, nothing. We're part of this city, too, you know, we're taxpayers, too. And even though I couldn't hear what you were saying about, you know, more work and more housing and more building and more, 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 and I drive through every day, and I see all the new houses going up everywhere, and it looks great, just stay out of my neighborhood, because you won't see none of that. And it's kind of hurtful. So, okay, I complained about just about everything I wanted to complain about, and I won't, I won't take up any more of your time, but I want you to know, I'm not going to be forgotten if I have to come down here and not hear you guys, because I can't hear, I'm sorry, but I want you to know, I am concerned, and I want somebody to say something about that building, because it's been a year. How long's it got to be? You know, how long's it got to go on? Why can't we push him? Why is he within his rights to have that mess? But if I don't mow my lawn, the city's going to come up and tell me, you got to mow your lawn, or we're going to mow it for you and you're going to pay. It's not right. Please, drive by my house, look at the building. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathy, for your comments. Any other public input this evening? Anything virtually, Corey? Nothing?
No input.
Nothing from the city clerk's office? Okay, we can move on to action items, please, Adrian.
Action item number one is tax increment ordinance for the Mount Pleasant Place Housing Urban Renewal Area.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage to council meetings prior to the meeting, although this to be finally passed, be suspended.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Jones, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council approval of an ordinance creating a tax increment financing district for the Mount Pleasant Place Urban Renewal Area. The proposed ordinance authorizes utilization of tax increment financing to incentivize development efforts in the area. The plan was reviewed by the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission on July 17, 2024. The Long Range Planning Advisory Commission has forwarded its recommendations to the City Council, affirming that the plan is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan for development. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion or questions? Seeing and hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Jones and a second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number two is contract with Neighborly Software for Community Development Project Management Software as a Service.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Housing and Community Development Director Alexis Stager is recommending City Council approve the contract with Neighborly Software and authorize the Housing and Community Development Department Director to execute all documents related to the agreement. The Dubuque Housing and Community Development Department is responsible for administering grants and loans through multiple funding sources for projects that improve our city's housing stock, contribute to livable, viable, equitable neighborhoods. Working with federal, state, and local funding sources allows our programs to have a dynamic impact in the community. Our grants that are funded through the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development all have separate reporting systems established by HUD Division distributing the funds. Between all the funding sources and programs provided, housing staff manages around 150 projects per year. When there is an increase in funding or a disaster like COVID-19, that number can easily double. Several jurisdictions throughout the country, and many in Iowa, have adopted the use of online software developed for local government use in community development programs. As we continue to apply for grants and seek funding to invest in affordable housing, a software solution could increase efficiencies in workflow, customer service, reporting, and staff capacity. Given the specialized capabilities of Neighborly, sole source procurement has been approved for this software. Total onboarding costs for this software are $60,400. This includes a one-time setup fee for eight programs at $3,500 per program, summing $28,000. Annual end-user licensing for this software is $2,700 per user, with an estimated 12 users, summing $32,400 annually. Initial onboarding costs have been approved to be funded through excess general fund carryovers. The annual licensing will be paid for out of each of the grant program's administrative budgets. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion or questions here?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Farber.
So is this software one that is just based on and from the HUD organization, or is this more broad-based and used throughout more communities for other reasons? Thank you.
Alexis Stager, Housing and Community Development Director. It is actually used for different programs, IFA, state programs, et cetera, because it runs like a project management system, but what's key to it and why it's best used for HUD programs is the data collection side. The data that we have to report back out to HUD and other federal agencies is built right in and actually integrates with their systems.
So I know that you're also going to talk to us about Citizen Serve software, so that was the reason for the question, to see if Neighborly overlaps, or if they're two different ERP systems or management systems that the city would be using or could be using.
They are two separate systems, yep.
Okay. All right, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it.
Other questions? Well, I just want to say, I don't have a question necessarily, so you can, you can go ahead and walk away, but I, I do want to thank you for, for finding this. I mean, this is, you know, the, we've said often at this desk, the work that, that has to go through the Housing and Community Development Department and what that really means and the challenges that that, that really provides to staff, and I think this is a really good find to be able to do that. I think this is something that's going to be very, very helpful in helping you to be more effective as a, as a group and as a department, so I appreciate the fact that we have this before us tonight. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number three is quarterly rental licensing and inspections update and presentation of proposed program changes.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, approve, and view the presentation.
Second.
Second by Sprank.
I got a motion by Rousell, second by Jones first. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Housing and Community Development Director Alexis Stager is recommending a modification to the city rental inspection program. Biennial licensing and inspection model retains the current rental license application process, but increases the duration of the license from one to two years. Rental properties would be inspected every renewal period or every two years. After the initial renewal period, on alternating renewal periods, rental license holders would have the option to perform a self-inspection if the property and license holder are in good standing. Subsequent two-year renewal would require a city inspection regardless of good standing status. To balance the inspection load from year to year, approximately half of the 11,000 units would be scheduled to renew each year. This biennial licensing and inspection model ensures that city resources continue to be focused on properties and owners or agents where they are most needed. Rental property owners or agents or properties that are not in good standing will have an effective inspection cycle of two years, while those that do meet the in-good-standing criteria will have a city rental inspection no less than once every four years. In addition to focused resources, this model also promotes landlord-tenant communication during the renewal process. In addition, the implementation of a two-year licensing and inspection cycle, along with the implementation of automated processes in the new Citizen Serve software, will greatly reduce the administrative burden for the rental permit clerk. Implementing the biennial licensing and inspection model would have a limited budget impact. Implementing the biennial licensing and inspection model would have a limited budget impact. The effective annual fee for each rental property would remain the same, and the distribution of units that would come due each year would be similar, resulting in consistent and stable revenue to continue funding the division as intended. Deputy code official Ben Potoff will now have a presentation. I respectfully recommend mayor and city council approval of the new rental inspection program.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, city council. I'm Ben Potoff, deputy code official with the Housing and Community Development Department. Excited to present some updates from our last time we talked and see if I can get this to move. There we go. So, last time we talked was our fiscal year 2025 budget. At that time, you've seen some slides on our continuous improvement efforts in the department or in our division specifically. We continue to work on continuous improvement. However, we continue also to hear concerns from residents living in rental properties that are in less than ideal conditions and from concerned community members. So, with that, we've taken that feedback, gone back with our staff and worked on some proposed updates. But first, I kind of want to review what we've accomplished this last quarter. So, this slide, this chart was presented in our fiscal year 25 budget. It shows that we're making a positive impact. Our passing rates are going up slightly. They're kind of tabling off, but we're hitting that 30 to 35% passing rate, which is significantly up from our low, which was well under 10% of the units passing. When I pulled the data and looked a little closer at the last 19 months, we see that we actually had more units pass in June for the first time ever than fail. So, that was interesting. So, we drove a little further into that data. When we pulled out the assisted housing inspections, we saw that that margin was still pretty wide. There's 25% of units passed or in June it was 31.8. So, we're still seeing the difference or the discrepancy between assisted housing units and their passing rate versus the typical rentals, market-rate rental inspection passing rates. When we looked just at assisted housing, again, this explains the reason we were over 64% in June that passed that inspection on the initial visit. So, exciting that we saw that crossover where we had more units pass, but that obviously when we drilled into the data, it didn't really give us as gratifying answer as we had hoped. So, we're still seeing the gap wider amongst typical market-rate rentals, and we're seeing some correlation because assisted housing units are inspected every two years and our rental licensing inspections occur about every four years. So, why do we think that matters? That's because we think that the frequency of code inspections leads to code-compliant properties. The more frequently we can ensure that they're being maintained, the easier it is to make minor corrections to prevent bigger problems. And also, the frequency of landlord-tenant interactions improves the communication and the ability to address those smaller issues before they escalate. So, a lot else has happened in this past quarter. We had two rental inspectors that were kicking butt and doing great, and they got promoted, which happens when you have good people. So, we lost two really good employees, but on a positive side, we've got a combination inspector that came up through the rental program and has experience in that side of the house. So, we flexed him over to cover more rental inspections, making sure that we didn't backslide. We didn't want to lose ground that we had made on that inspection cycle. And then, the Citizen Serve software implementation, which was mentioned by Ms. Farber, is underway. And so, we're spending an awful lot of our staff resources on that implementation to make sure we get it right. We meet twice a week, once with the software vendor and once just internally to discuss what that implementation next step is going to look like. And we anticipate our go-live date on or before January 1, 2025, and that will coincide nicely with the proposed changes that I'm going to move into next. So, these proposed changes really, really were a team effort. We wanted to completely rethink how we do business because minor incremental changes didn't seem right, given the conditions we were seeing. So, we looked at what our goals were. The goals that we heard from you and from community members were to decrease time between inspections. To increase efficiencies, we saw some administrative bottlenecking up at our permits clerk window. We wanted to accomplish those more frequent inspections without increasing staffing levels. We told you we could do that. We're going to try. We wanted to improve landlord and tenant communication and the ability to resolve concerns among them without our involvement whenever possible. And we want to continue rewarding high-performing property owners and properties. We want to continue to acknowledge that if you're doing well, you don't probably need us in your business any more than we already are. We also wanted to increase the frequency of inspections on all marginal properties and property managers, not just those kind of escalating to that priority category level. So, when we looked at what we do, there's really kind of four fundamental pieces to this. One is, we take an application for all new rental licenses. That gives us a chance to look at the property kind of from various standpoints. We have other departments involved in that application review. Then we license. That's just a renewal period. It gives us a chance to check in with the property owners to gather information, like we collect information about assisted housing and the participation in that program. Then inspections, which is pretty obviously to make sure the properties are being maintained in a safe and satisfactory condition. And then, the new piece, we realized we couldn't do more without coming up with something creative. So, having some type of self-certification option was the new piece that's going to be a fundamental to the success of this program. One other key improvement, I mentioned Citizen Serve already. We're going to keep highlighting this as we go into changing because we couldn't do this if it didn't correlate with the software change. It's just too big. We'd have to kind of start fresh. And so, because we had the timing that lined up with this software change, it works really well. Citizen Serve is capable of allowing property owners and agents to select dates or to request dates and times for their own inspections, so making it more user-friendly for them to get a time and date that works, so they're not calling our staff to reschedule. They're going to be able to access all of their record information on rental licenses and building permits, code enforcement activities that'll all be accessible online. So, again, hopefully removing the amount of times they need to call us. We've put out the message that we want you to feel comfortable calling us, but we also don't want it to be a necessity to call us to get information. We'd rather you just had the ability to log in into your account and see what was happening. And then, obviously, the ability to access and pay invoices online will simplify the process for our permit clerk, again, reducing that administrative bottleneck. So, beyond that, getting into the process, the next five slides, I'm going to talk about the process that we're proposing. We do anticipate this being done in policy so that we have some flexibility so we can make adjustments as new information or changes occur in our environment. So, I just want to put that out there. The application process, if you've done this process before, this is largely unchanged. Some minor nuanced changes are that you'll be able, again, to access through Citizen Serve an online direct entry into that system of the application information, so that's not being redundantly entered by our staff. You'll also be able, or we'll also be flagging licenses issued to a property owner that hasn't attended the successful rental property management class as a conditional license. So, we want them to know that that training is really important to us, and so if you're not attending that training, it's still conditional until you've got that completed. Moving on to the renewal process, this is where it really changes pretty drastically. So, currently, we have an annual license. Pretty obviously, that means every January, we're sending out renewal to 3,600 license holders. It takes an awful lot of work from our permit tech at that time to do those license renewals. As you can imagine, pulling back in the 3,600 payments, entering the assisted housing data, updating the 3,600 records to reflect all of the information that we've gotten back takes quite a bit of time. And so, right now, she's really not taking any time off between about January and May, and that's just not fair to her. So, that was something we really wanted to focus on. By moving to a two-year renewal and tying it to an inspection, it reduces just right off the bat her workload by 50% each year on those renewals. The renewals notices with this new process will include their two-year license fees. So, annualized, that rate is the same, so we're not changing the rate for them year over year. It's just going to be charged two years at a time. And we're sending them an inspection scheduling notice at that time, allowing them to schedule their own inspection for the first few months. And if they don't, then we'll take care of scheduling it for them. Or if they're eligible for the self-inspection and self-certification, we're sending them the information about how to do that so that they can get that done, and they have a deadline for that as well. And we'll also include the successful rental property management information because we know that that's been one of our more successful things to get people up to speed on anything they're not performing well, that is getting the information in their hands. Apologize, I'm going to take it. So, when we started talking about self-inspection and self-certification, I think some of the community groups that we had heard from were a little concerned about that, but we really tried to build this out in a way that allowed them to feel confident that we weren't going to allow people to self-inspect that didn't already run a successful business. So, some of the conditions we allied were, the previous inspection had to be completed in person. So, again, not getting multiple renewals under self-certification. The owner or agent couldn't have been designated a priority category. The owner or agent has attended the successful rental property management training. There's been no citations issued for property maintenance code violations at the property in the previous two-year renewal period. Rental fees paid prior to the deadline, March 1, and self-certification completed prior to the July 1 deadline. We really highlight those deadlines intentionally because we want property owners to know three things. You either have an odd-year renewal or an even-year renewal, and depending on whether you self-inspected last time or not, you're eligible for self-inspection the next time if you're in good standing, but you still have to pay your fees every year by that deadline. We have an awful lot of effort that goes to collecting late fees, and if you want to participate with the self-inspection, it has to be completed by July 1. So, those are some dates we're really putting out there early and often to try to make sure they know them. If they meet those criteria, then obviously eligible for self-inspection and self-certification of code compliance. If not, we just go ahead and get the inspection on the books, allow them to self-schedule, or we schedule it if it passes March 1. So, another thing we wanted to build confidence in for those self-inspections, we wanted an audit process that we identified early. So, we thought if we pulled a 1% random sample to audit those self-inspected units, we'd feel pretty good about that. We also wanted to have a mechanism to inspect complaint-driven properties. So, we had some concerns with tenant retaliation, things of that nature. We thought if there was a way, and Citizen Serve, and there is, to flag those, we'll just go ahead and call those an audit inspection. We'll pop in at the two-year mark. If they weren't comfortable submitting that formal complaint and having us come out at that moment, we're going to be there pretty soon anyway, and we're not going to allow that one to go through under a self-certification. And then, any evidence of falsification of prior self-inspections would result in some in-person inspections to follow until we felt comfortable, again, that they understood what was expected. So, that's the gist of the process. We think it works well, but we're open to questions, obviously. The implementation was a whole nother piece of this. Because we're changing from an annual renewal to a biannual, we had to look at how we were going to do that. We decided we would do 50% of the units would be coded to an odd year, 2025, and 50% approximately to an even year. We're going to do our best to load balance that. So, what's that mean? For our team, that means we're not going to have all of the multifamilies in one year and all the single families in another year because single families are a lot more work for us. We're also going to look at the larger property owners and try to distribute their inspection loads so that they don't have all of them falling into one year or another. With that, properties passed in the previous two years, so looking at what we've already done, if they met the criteria for being in good standing, they would be eligible for that self-certification right away in January of 2025, and so we would work that process. Invoicing for odd-year renewals, that first year, would be for a full two-year period, and invoicing for the even-year renewals would be for a one-year period. That allows us to maintain a consistent budget. And so, some people would get that two-year renewal, some people would get the one. We'd do our best to explain that upfront. But then, moving into year two of 2026, the next 5,000 units, give or take, again, come due for renewal. If they were inspected and passed between 2024 and 2025 and meet the criteria, they would be eligible for self-certification. They would then get their two-year renewal, and the odd-year renewals, the ones that had paid two years in 2025, would not get a renewal in 2026. They would be due the next year. Lot of moving parts to that. So, in summary, the benefits that we think this system will provide are balanced workloads for staff and property managers, focused attention on properties and agents where indicators reflect potential problems. It promotes communication between landlords and tenants during the renewal process that self-inspection occurs, and we're hoping that they connect and resolve any more minor issues. It reduces the administrative burden, splitting the renewals across two years and utilizing automated processes in the Citizen Serve software, and it's budget-neutral for both the city and the property owners or the business owners. And moving from that into a couple more minor code changes, these we included because we wanted to get them on your radar. We'll be coming with the ordinance change in the near future, but these are coming from HUD, so they're really directed from the federal government. GFCI receptacles will be required within six feet of any water source. That's new. It's been in the building code for an awful, awful long time, but it's going to be in the property maintenance code. So, if you have receptacle near a water source, it'll have to be upgraded potentially if it's not already GFI-protected. And then, smoke alarms, we'll have to have a sealed battery. So, this has been in effect in Wisconsin for some time. HUD decided it's something that was important. It was codified through the Public and Federally Assisted Housing and Fire Safety Act of 2022, and so HUD is picking that up now and asking that that gets included in our assisted housing units. And to make it consistent, we're going to make it for all units. And this kind of jumps back, I apologize, but it jumps back to the new process. This new process, the biannual inspection and licensing, doesn't change our ability to use priority category to further affect the really challenged property owners. And landlords currently in tier-two status, if they maintain they're in good standing, would continue to be eligible for self-inspection and still essentially be on the same schedule. And tier-one status really wasn't being used, but it will continue to allow them also to self-inspect and help us manage our workload so we can focus our resources where they're most needed. And that concludes my presentation.
Sorry, Ben stole my slide there for a minute, so I'm going to jump back. One thing I wanted to mention is that this is very, it actually ends up acting very similar to what we have today in tier one through three. Okay? So, tier one was those landlords that were managed by a professional management company and had many units, and they were eligible for tier one, where they had to self-certify, and we'd go in and do 20% of their units. We never had anyone that qualified or opted into that tier. So, this gives us that ability to do it without having them opt into a tier. This gives them the ability to opt into it every other year if they're meeting all these criteria. So, those that are going to be able to self-certify are like that tier one every second year. And then, the tier two is those that today are on a four-year licensing inspection, and so we're trying to kind of reduce that. For those that may be kind of falling a little lower in that tier two, possibly heading into priority category so that we can get in every two years. So, it does still kind of work the same general way, and priority category does not disappear where that's the tier three. If you've, you know, had a citation, you haven't been making improvements when we asked, you know, had violations, you fall into that. We're coming every year. That's not changing. We're going to come every year until you can be compliant. It's a seven-year program, so that program remains. And the other thing I wanted to mention is the difference between what city council approves and what we may end up with as a product. So, in our ordinance, this program and how often we inspect is actually written into the ordinance as directed by the city manager. So, the city manager will adopt a procedure for rental licensing inspections. We always are very forthcoming about how we're going to do that and where we're at in the cycle, and that's why we give you updates. So, we're not going to be bringing back an ordinance for you to adopt that because this is directed by the city manager in our ordinance today. So, what we did in this slide was give you kind of the overview of things that we know will not change if you're okay with what we've presented, and those were these last, I think it's, hang on, these summary, right? So, we're going to balance those workloads for staff across the two years. It's going to be a two-year licensing for fees or not going to change, but you're billed for two at a time, and we're going to be doing that self-certification and those qualifications for self-certification. Some of that may change. We're still getting input. We've gotten input from our biggest players. We went out and talked to the Uke Landlords Association, ICC. So, we have been getting this input, and this is what they were all getting pretty excited about, actually. Both landlords and residents think this is a good compromise so far. That doesn't mean that we don't find something that changes that needs to be changed within this procedure, such as another reason you can't certify or another reason you can self-certify. We haven't run the process yet, so it may come to us that there's other things that to say, hey, we had a problem. And Ben did a great job. So everything else, if you just have any questions.
Okay. All right. So we'll have questions and discussion. I'm going to start because I'm really curious to hear what everybody has to say. I think the moment I read this, I was very, very intrigued. I think this is a just a really innovative and interesting idea, considering what we've been talking about here. I do have a burning question, though, that I have to ask. You kind of just alluded to it, but where is everybody? I mean, when you guys come in before us, this room is packed, and I see no faces from the public here to address us on this item this evening. And I can't ask you to speak for the public. So I want to make it clear that I'm not asking you to do that. But is it your sense that this, you just, you kind of just said it. I mean, you've talked to the landlord association, you've talked to the the groups that have been working with tenants primarily, and they've kind of been some of the vocal folks here that have talked to us the most. You've had these conversations with them, and they, to you, have said that they approve of this new format?
Yeah, they want to see how it'll go. We thought tonight that we would see Iowa CCI here, just because they like to give input and more information. But I think they felt like it was covered in our meeting. We always present things to landlords association before we implement, and that was one of the best-received presentations. And it was actually the same flow charts that you were just given. And they had just very few questions here and there about logistics, but very well received. So we did ask if there'd be, what they think their membership would opt into self-certification, because you can opt out. You can have an inspector. Some like having our inspectors come every two years. It helps them get in with their tenants. It helps with the communication. And sometimes they just want another eye on it. They already self-inspect. They didn't think very many would. They do know of a few who might. So we just wanted to make sure we could balance that. But that was really the the biggest comment received, unless I'm forgetting something, Mike.
That's, that's incredibly interesting, just because, I mean, I haven't heard from anybody about this at all. No one has called me about this. So I certainly hope that what you just said is is the exact case, that it is that people are actually really happy with this. That would be phenomenal. So I hope that is the case. But as you also mentioned, you know, there are tweaks and changes that could be made at the discretion of the city manager to do a little bit more with this. But you, as you said, you'd bring it back to us if it was something substantial. All right, very interesting. Yeah, Ms. Farber first, and then I'll come to you.
Can I? So I'm a little curious about the resource allocation, and I am just really pleased with the new system and how that with a little bit of AI help is going to help you with your efficiency and your operation. You had mentioned 2025 about 5,000 units, 2026 about 5,000 units. How is the future development that's under construction for the housing that we will have many more units going forward? How does that fold into the mathematics here and your physical employees as well, your FTEs?
Sure. As you look at increasing, if we do hit over the next six years 1,100 units, that it would possibly increase the need for an FTE. Currently today, that wouldn't be the case with this. We'd be able to allocate a caseload with these two years with what we have today. Looking forward, depends on how efficient this is. Like I said, we'll see in the first two years how many opt into a self-certification if they were eligible, or opt into, hey, come to our property, which would take us a little bit more time. If that doesn't happen, we could possibly unload everything that's new without new FTEs. We have, whenever we have capacity for other things, we work on, like the hoarding and other homeowner situations. So we're doing a lot less of that right now, just being forthcoming. We're getting a software up, and we're down to inspectors. We're doing a lot less of that to keep up with the workload. So if there is a little capacity, that can unload the onboard those as well.
Are there, it's just for my math here. Are we currently at 10,000 units? Are you projecting the differential in year one to year two based on construction, new availability of housing?
So we're getting close to 11,000 units. Some are dorm rooms, and fire is going to help with some of the dorm room units. But we're getting close to 11. So we're saying approximately 5,000, because that's about what we would need to inspect. But we're going to have to support fire in some ways and the others.
So then if I can just intimit, 2027, you will have greater capa, you will have, we will have greater than 11,000 units for you too. So we will look forward to the 2026 budget review. Then I am presuming to see about staffing, and hopefully the automated system is can accommodate that growth. I mean, there's future built into that as well.
We have some future built in. Just depends on how how well this runs.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, I think it's great. I'm a landlord. I am certified in that one program. And I look forward to the self-certification process. So thank you for that option.
Mr. Jones?
Well, I'm impressed. You kind of told us what you're going to do, and now you're telling us that you're doing what you said. And that's, that's the balance that we all try and strike in government, see what we're going to do and then do it. And you've been responsive to to all these interests coming at you from all different directions in a pretty wonderful way. So I'm really impressed with that. My honor to point out that I'm really supportive of and glad to see the sealed batteries and smoke detectors requirement coming down from the feds. I'm wondering when, or if there's conversation in some room somewhere to start to require carbon monoxide detectors, because that's a silent killer and and can take out a whole family in the blink of an eye with nobody knowing it. I'd like to see us require them in housing and in all housing. And whenever I talk about carbon monoxide detectors and smoke detectors, I also talk about weather alerting radios that I think are essential for every living unit in the world as well, especially if you're going to live in a place like Dubuque, ever since we took down the Bishop Lawrence statue that kept the tornadoes and things away. So that's a, so just some food for conversation. It's not a direction or other than to think about it and how we might improve on that, because it certainly improves public safety.
And actually, I might be happy to hear, we actually do have a requirement for CO detectors. So we, that is, had been adopted, I would say, in the 2018 model cycle. So they switched that in the IPMC in 2018, and we adopted that later, not in 2018. So that's just the code cycle. So we are currently inspecting to make sure they have a CO detector.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Resnick, and I'll come back in a sec.
All right. Thank you. Just two quick questions. So what other communities have this inspection regimen?
None. We kind of combined a couple of different ones. We did research on who was doing what and how. Some are doing different types of self-certification, different types of programs. You could do continuing education as a landlord, try to get the cycle down. Some just had FTEs get down to a two-year cycle. And we tried to combine them. So this is actually unique in what we combined several different cities, and we kind of what would work in Dubuque and what wouldn't. So we took little pieces of each.
So that must have given you pause about, you know, why doesn't anybody do this? And so, and so you're looking into that. And of course, sometimes people are stuck in silos, and this is the way we've always done it, and I appreciate the innovation. But I'm sure you're always, you're going to be looking at this program and seeing where we are and what do we need to do. And bottom line for me, will these program changes increase the quality of rental property in Dubuque?
We think so, yes. So we're, we will see more engagement from landlords and in an individual basis with self-certification. And that audit is going to help with that. So landlords actually get to take a little more ownership of it. We do think it will increase the quality.
It has nothing to do with HUD, right? I mean, HUD and all their, they have so many requirements. And this is going to pass muster with them, right?
Yes. And so if you're accepting assistance, the only requirement they have is that it's more often. So they are inspected more often. When you, when you get assistance, you won't get to opt into a self-certification. But other than that, it is, HUD does not require that we do this, and they don't have anything that says we can't.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm. Ladies yourself.
Thank you. I'm really impressed at all that went in. It's clear that a lot of thought went into this. And I just think back to not that long ago, when we had a whole roomful of people with concerns and questions. And it seems that you've really built in all of those things into your process. And so if if we were to approve this tonight, do you have a plan for informing? How will landlords know about these changes and tenants as well? What's your plan to share the good news?
Sure. So after this meeting, we need to make sure the software can set everything up the way that we anticipate it happening so that we can give users, such as landlords and tenants, the interface, right? So they can log in, they can see where their inspections are, they can do their certification online. So we'd like to release it with a whole bundle of, hey, and you can see how it's all going. But before that, we will be doing a mailing because we have code changes. So the GFCI and that's a fire alarm change is something we want to get out immediately. We don't want to wait for that software, a couple of months of, hey, here's how you log in. So we'll be doing for sure a mailing that has that information in it to all landlords from our rental license list. So that will start. And then we usually use our Facebook, our Instagram, and other means so that tenants can see it too, because we do not have a tenant list.
Okay. And one other question is, with the new automated system, can a landlord pay their fees online as well, or do they have to send you a check?
They will be able to pay online. We don't know what interface we're going to use yet. There's a lot of different options with our CitizenServe. But yes, you'll be able to pay online. So I don't know 100% if that's credit card, ACH, or how that will work. But yes, it is one of the features.
That sounds like a time saver for somebody who is collecting all those checks.
And taking them to the bank. Yes, it is a lot of time savings for us. It is very nice. Like Ben said, Tammy can finally actually take her vacation that she's allocated, which is nice. And I also wanted to mention, we do, we do plan to use the utility billing. There's a newsletter that goes out with those. So we will put information in there as well.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
I just wanted to dive a little deeper into who all you met with. You mentioned CCI. Did you meet with leadership of CCI that had been enrolled in conversations with us before?
Yeah. So Ben was the one who put those together. So I'll let Ben speak to to that. I mean, I was at the Dubuque Area Landlords Association one, but he can speak to the others.
Yeah. So the Landlord Association, we did present to their board members at this point, and that they're the ones that gave us a warm reception, I would say, for this. For CCI, we met, it was a general meeting, I believe. They were discussing a bunch of different topics. And they had, like, some state representatives in the room. It was really good, good conversation. I think there were probably 30 or 40 people there. And it seemed, again, well-received. We had just a couple of questions, but really, they seemed to be positive. I thought they would be here to show their support tonight, but that's okay.
Yeah, thanks. You know, we went, just to trace back for those at home are listening, we went from requests to just add people to our department, more inspectors, and very specifically, some people said, we need two inspectors, or, but at the time, you advised us, well, that's not really what necessarily will get us there now. And what this comes down to is process improvement. And I feel that you guys have just really knocked this out of the park. You listened, you're using technology to advance our ability as a city to more efficiently serve our citizens and to not add cost to that service, which is, to me, what government is all about. We're trying to create excellent service and to utilize tax dollars wisely. So thank you for that. One question, Mr. Pedoff, you had made a comment about, so there's a 1% random sampling for inspection. But I want to use the scenario that if, say, I have a person who is a constituent contact me and say, I'm afraid to report this because I don't want retaliation. That process, what would that look like, and how would I guide that person?
So we're looking at that being called the audit inspection, right? So you report it, but it's it's pulled, and we're coming for an audit inspection. It's not a complaint inspection. It's not that somebody called to complain. You're one of our audit inspections. So that there isn't, you, that could be pulled for a complaint reason. It can also be pulled because you're the 1%. So it can be pulled for lots of different reasons. You don't know why we're coming. And so it doesn't put it on the tenant, or whoever was complaining maybe about the tenant, not just the landlord. So we're hoping to kind of make that all build in, because that was the one thing we also were working on. I don't know if everyone remembers, but complaint inspections and people wanting or being able to complain, we're looking at anonymous tip line. And sometimes that can also cause, because from retaliation and other things. So we wanted to build those into an audit. So if you had one of those, we're just going to come in anyway. So it's going to be one of our audit inspections. Now, if we continually get the same hit, and there's no problems, we're going to flag it. We've had a few of those come through WebQA that we currently have today. And there were no problems. It was a, it was a neighbor issue, and it got flagged. So we have ways to kind of work through that system too. But a constituent would be able to submit that. You could submit it for them as well. And then we would flag the property for what the issue is, and they would be flagged for an audit.
So the QA software that we would have people do right now to report is acceptable processes. Well, you would just now keep it anonymous?
Yeah, unfortunately, there's going to be other ways. Right now, that is the perfect way. So you can submit an anonymous complaint that way. We're not necessarily always going to queue up an inspection right away unless there's some life safety listed in there. So that also kind of helps with the timing, in case they have contacted a landlord or someone else, and they're trying not to have an issue with it. You know what I mean? So they don't have the retaliation. But there is an anonymous, you can add an anonymous, submit an asking complaint, or there's also one called landlord feedback that they can use to submit it. And they don't have to submit their name, but they can if they want to.
Okay. And in what period of time are we going to circle back to review how this has worked, how the process has worked? Is there a timeline that you think would give you adequate time to come back and maybe share with us feedback, experience, what you're able to do, what you've seen?
Yeah. We're likely to come back before, at least to council, before we release the software and the first licenses. So the public's very aware. It's on an agenda. They're not missing it. And there's login information, so this will get more detailed for people. So we're likely to come back to that. We're looking to release in January 2025 with that software and this change. That's if the software goes absolutely perfectly. So maybe February, but January, February, we're in that realm, and we'll come before we release those, so that you have more information. And then when you talk about data and how it's going, we're going to need a full year of data before we actually know what this program is like exactly. We may be making small tweaks. But if there's anything major that happens, you may see us sooner. If there's like something, there was a glitch, something came up we didn't think about. Hopefully, we don't have that happen, but you shouldn't see us for about a year after that for the data collection.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate in the past, many had requested, and I had advocated for a full code change. I appreciate, though, that this is a compromise. And I'm so glad to hear that this has been so well-received by those who were concerned and felt that they were not being heard. And now I feel like whatever adaption we can make is because people brought those concerns forward. And so I salute them, because I don't think we'd be here today if a number of people had not shared their concerns with the process. So, and not related to you as a process, but related to their concerns with their own safety and retaliation or risk of losing their housing. So great way to knock it. Good job, guys. Thank you.
Thanks. And that, I just kudos quick to Ben for listening to those experiences and to generalizing what that is, how their experience from their side came about. And he got his team together and said, put that on the board. What does that look like for us? Because that's not our experience as inspectors. That's their experience as a landlord or a tenant. So his team and Ben really took that on. He came in and said, can we do this? Sure, let's make sure the residents get a lot of input, and we know what it looks like. And they just ran with it. So just kudos to Ben on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Hang on. Mr. Sprink, I want to check with you first.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions slash comments, so. So basically, I'm hearing a lot of good things. Very happy. So thank you to the staff for coming up with these solutions. I understand that this will take time and implementation, so a good year or two, till you have some really good data. So my question is, in, say, two years after it's implemented, it has positive results, why would it not be our benefit to put this into our code?
So we, when we have procedures, I'll answer a little of this, but I think Karina can also answer some of it. But when you have procedures that staff has to follow, they have to be able to move faster than policy can be adapted. So sometimes, if something completely in- completely incorrect in this process, we need to be able to stop. And we can't just have a code saying we will do it. So we've always left that into, same with priority category, we write in that, hey, it exists, here's how you appeal it, here's how you do it. But the actual process and timelines are with the city manager. So that's kind of how it always has existed in our code, in several different codes, that the policy and how it goes through Iowa code is in our ordinance. So it's very clear. And then the procedures are posted online and other things that are controlled under the city manager's direction from city council.
So what I would add is that the way that our form of government works is that the city council hires the three employees, city manager, city attorney, city clerk, and the city manager is responsible for all of the other hires and staff and providing the direction to them. And a policy of this nature is execution of staff assignments and roles and how that will work. And so it's built this way to provide the city manager flexibility to change it without having to come back to the council on a limited meeting schedule, as Alexis mentioned. So it can be more fluid and adjust to needs with, because, for example, in some cases, let's say, there was even fewer staff available because of openings or things of that nature, it would allow for the, the process to be adjusted on the fly based on resources and things of that nature.
That would answer my, that would answer my question. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Ms. Farber?
Yeah. So one of the things I always used to do when I was implementing software and working on logistics and just how the bumps in the roads can be smoothed out, et cetera, was to have like a focus group of users to give that feedback. And I was just wondering, based upon what the conversation was about the two groups that Ben had spoken with, that maybe the landlord group and the other sister group would be happy to volunteer a few folks to be part of that test phase implementation, once you're comfortable with the rollout and you're almost ready to turn it, but you'd like to get some comments as to, does the software work from an outside user point of view, or just from a landlord point of view. So it might just be insightful to get their thoughts on the process.
Definitely. Thank you. And they, they did express interest in, like I said, well, how can we pay it, and which methods and other things. So more input coming. And they did ask Ben if he can get to their, get to their meeting more as they're doing it. So we'll, we'll take that. Then we might, that might be a great idea.
Yeah. Community support and community input, you just can't beat it. And when, especially when you're rolling something out that input, you know, impacts them every day. So.
Yeah, very helpful.
And we meet with the Board of Directors of the Landlord Association every month and have for about seven and eight, seven or eight years.
Nice. Good. Thank you.
Okay. Good discussion here. I'm a little bit floored by this whole thing, to be honest with you. I mean, this is, we had, it was not long ago that we sat in this room and had some really serious conversations about how we were going to be able to get down to more of an inspection cycle that, that clearly we wanted to see. I mean, that was the discussion that we had, and clearly the residents were asking for. But to get to that point in this way, in a really innovative way, and, and to do it with the backing of both the residents and the landlords, to the point where they're so happy that they don't even, like, come to, to say anything about it, you know, and hopefully, that's the case. Again, I'm just, I'm floored by it. I mean, it's, it's such a, it's such good government. I mean, it's a really good way to handle this problem. So, good work. I, I really appreciate this. I think this is great. And I know we're going to look at it, and some of it might not work, and we might need to change it. And I think that's totally fine. I also think that's very good government. And, you know, to, to Mr. Sprank's point, yeah, I think it's, it's important to make sure that we, as a policymaking body, put things in place that say, this is important enough that we want you to do it. But I think there are more ways to do that than just put it in an ordinance that does then tie your hands whenever you run into things where you need to be more nimble. And I think that's the balance that we have to strike. And it really appears to me that we've done it in this case. I'm excited to see how this works. I'm, I'm really excited to see how this works. This could, this could be, I think, a very useful way of being able to solve this problem that we, we've been talking about, and have more inspections and do it in both a way that provides more government where it needs to happen, in the people who are not keeping up with the inspection cycle and doing the things they need to do, and then less government for the people who are doing just fine. They don't, like you said, you know, Ben, you pointed out, they don't need us in their business. And I think that that's, that's great. I, so, great work. I'm excited to vote for this. I think this is, this is really good. And I appreciate this conversation. I appreciate the good pointed questions that we have here. And we'll look forward to more community feedback in the future if we need to change anything or any, you know, make any adjustments. So looking forward to seeing where it goes. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Motion here is to receive and file and approve this. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number four is work session request, regional workforce landscape and Imagine Dubuque Comprehensive Plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and set the regional workforce landscape and Imagine Dubuque Comprehensive Plan work session for 5:15 on August 19th.
Second.
All right. You've got a motion by Resnick, and I'll take a second by Jones there. I couldn't tell, Mike, is there anything to add to this, or we're just scheduling a work session on this one? Okay. All right. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number five is transition timeline and request for work session for new city council agenda management software.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and set the work session for September 16th at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Got a motion by Rousell, and a second by Wethel. Adrian, I think you, do you have any other comments to make on this?
Only comment I'll make that's mentioned in the memo is that the October 7th, the city council meeting will, is the meeting we intend to transition to the new Civic Plus software for city council agendas. And so, as mentioned, this work session will be the city council meeting prior to that meeting, just as a way for the city council and the public to see what the new public facing view of the agenda will look like.
Great. Thank you, Adrian. Appreciate the planning ahead, heads up here, and knowing that we got some changes coming, but we're going to be okay. All right. And we, it looks like everybody's good with this. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is creating housing opportunities, updated handout and video.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and view the video.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Note that there is an updated handout in this as well, for us to take a look at, and for everyone to take a look at with increased housing opportunities. With that, Eric, could you roll the video, please? That's a whole lot of action out there. It's good to see that. We've had a lot of great discussions about housing tonight. So I appreciate that we're able to cap it off with that video. Okay. Motion there is to receive and file. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number seven is Next Level Savings Program video.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and view the video.
Second.
Motion by Resnick, second by Wethel. We can roll the video, please, Eric.
It was my decision to help my family get to where we need to be, to get on track to be able to provide for them, not to struggle.
This program focuses on people's lives. The Next Level Savings Program is the Family Self-Sufficiency Program that's offered here at the Housing and Community Development Department. We work only with families who are currently on the Housing Choice voucher.
I had came up on the waiting list for a voucher. It was a great opportunity to get help with having a place to stay.
The program is for five years, and it is here to help individuals and families make and reach their goals to learn financial literacy and obtain financial stability, and to also help them to overcome obstacles, or learn how to overcome those obstacles that can make them be their best selves. Shamika is one of my participants who took off with the ground running. She was very eager and motivated to work on her goals and taking her life to the next level.
Yeah, some of my goals was to get a job, go back to school. When I first came down here, instantly got a job, school, I got a certificate in customer service, I'm exploring now, I'm working on fixing my credit. So since I came, I haven't stopped.
We work on increasing earned income. And how that works with their voucher is, when they increase their earned income, they will be required to pay an increased portion of their rent. And so that increased portion, we try to match it dollar for dollar in a savings account every month. So you do the math, right? And that's how that savings happens. The savings account does not come from the families or the individuals' own income or pocket. The money comes from their housing assistance payment, which comes from HUD.
Some people come in with nothing, and they can leave out with a lot if they just do the work. I got a family that look up to me, you know? So I have to do it, not just for me, but for my baby as well, and my mom.
Once they successfully graduate from the program by reaching their goals, free from cash, welfare assistance at the time of graduation, and being employed, they will get that money, and they can use that for whatever reasons. It's unrestricted. I'm here to help motivate them and to help encourage them and let them know you can do it, too.
She was just there. She was there, willing to help, listen, and give advice and resources. It felt good to connect with somebody that understands.
When I ask about what success is like on them, I want them to get comfortable with being uncomfortable with their ideas of themselves. I want to see what their idea of success is. I want to see if they have a cap, because I like to remove those caps.
Success on Shamika looks like a homeowner in the future, good credit, reaching my goals, staying focused. I'm just proud where I came from, where I was at, and being the journey. But I made it, and I'm going to continue on.
What a great program of ours to highlight. I really appreciate that, that the City Dubuque has that with the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. And I'll meet you and all the staff there. And thanks to Shamika for being a part of that video, too. That was great to hear her story. Okay. Motion there is to receive and file. Watch that video. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel. Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number eight is 2024 Asphalt Overlay Program video.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and view the video.
Second.
Motion by Resnick, second by Farber. One more time, please, Eric.
Oh, I'd say they're 100% smoother. There's some streets that we, we throw an asphalt overlay on, then the next thing you know, people are complaining that the cars are speeding because they're so smooth. The asphalt overlay project, it's a long process. There's a lot, lot of moving parts with it. Right after the first of the year, we go around the City of Dubuque. We rate the streets of their condition. We add on to that how much traffic flow is, any future construction in the area, and we make a decision to which streets we will be overlaying. This year, we're doing 8.2 miles. We were scheduled to do five miles, but with our easy winter last year, we had funding left over, and council approved us for three extra miles. All this is done in-house, except for the milling. First off, we'll go in, we'll check our manholes, we'll have water department go around, they check their valves and their hydrants. We'll lower all the manhole tops and the water boxes. The next step will be milling, where we come in with a great big grinder. We'll mill off the streets, and then the crew will be paving it. And if it needs paint, and we get them painted, then we have to come back and raise all them water boxes and manholes. And once them are all done, the project's complete. It all starts at the beginning of the year, and it ends in pretty much November. It's a lot cheaper than doing total reconstruction. And the purpose of it is to go in, put a fresh mat of asphalt on the streets to make them safer for driving. It gives them longer life. It smoothes them out, it scures them so we aren't getting all the water underneath. We do all city streets, doesn't matter if it's a residential, or JFK, or, we just did three projects on Asbury, which really super improved your ride. And I'm proud of my guys because they did a really good job on it. We've had a lot of compliments on it. It makes us feel good. It's pride and your workmanship. I'm very lucky to have a very good crew that runs my asphalt. And I like to thank my guys, how good a work they do and the dedication to the job. All these employees go out and plow your streets in the winter, then they're out here, no matter what the temperature is. You don't hear any complaining. They just go out and do their job, and they do it very well.
Well, we've definitely experienced some of that this year, haven't we? If you've been driving at all or moving around the city, you've seen it happening. Yeah. So thanks a lot to that whole team. And I, it's a lot of work. And it has been so hot outside. So I really appreciate everybody who's doing that work in the outdoors. It's been some real dedication that we've seen from our City Dubuque staff. So thank you. All right. Motion there is to receive and file, and watch that. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next, our council member reports.
Mr. Jones.
Well, last Friday, a bunch of us traveled to Altoona, and we're going to celebrate this on the 19th. So I won't, won't dive into it too far, but Dubuque received the Community of Character Award from the Robert D. and Billy Ray Center at Drake University. And it's kind of a big deal. It's kind of, the center's kind of a big deal. They're, they have global impact. And Governor Ray's dream was to honor, "Good Things Done Well" were his words. And I liked those words a whole lot. It was an interesting group of folks that, that got to go. Laura Rousell and husband John were with us, Katie Wethel was with us, city manager, and Mrs. Van Ruggen. So we had the community foundation represented there, as well as the City of Dubuque. Alex Dixon from the DRA was there, and Alex is outgoing chair of Greater Dubuque Development. So we had them there. And then we had, the two that really kind of impressed me to have stand on there was the publisher and the executive editor of The Telegraph Herald, Mike Fortman and Amy Gilligan. Now, Mike is incoming Chamber of Commerce president. So, so we had just about the whole Dubuque standing on that stage, and, and just a small number of people. But I got to tell you, there aren't very many communities that are out getting awards that have the leadership of all those different groups, including their local newspapers, standing there with them to do something for, for a city. And it talked about the things that we talk about all the time, partnerships, people, and planning. And I think that we do do good things very well here. And they think so, too. So we're going to celebrate this on the 19th. The leadership of the Ray Foundation is going to be in Dubuque to, to share, share their experience with us. So it was a great, great opportunity. Thanks for doing whatever you were doing that you think go.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Jones. I'm glad everybody was able to make it there. That was great. Ms. Farber?
Yeah. So talking about partnerships and planning, I was very honored to represent Dubuque at Google headquarters last week, or the week before, in, as a member Dubuque at Google Headquarters last week, or the week before, in, as a member of the Artificial Intelligence Committee for the National League of Cities, and what we are doing is, we are looking at use cases, in other words, testimonials from the different municipalities across the National League of Cities cohorts, in order to better appreciate how municipalities can use AI, how to demystify it, and some of the fundamentals, so that we can tee up in a, in a playbook, or in an operational document, that we can all use as just a baseline, if you will, to create our policies, and to recognize the initial phases of our AI applications, of which Dubuque has a few, and I was very pleased that the use cases that were presented on behalf of Dubuque for smarter streets and smarter cities, amongst others, were going to be, I think, incorporated into the playbook, so we will have some testimonials to include amongst some of the others that use it for water utilities, and there's some very applications, very similar to what we just saw about asphalt, and where, where are the potholes, where are the cities, there's actually, Tucson, Arizona, as an example, has drones and cameras on their garbage cans, and as they are going through the city, picking up every neighborhood visiting, they have an AI feedback to their IT officer, to their CIO, and they can tell that way, without extra manpower, what needs to be done for public works, and so that's just one common example, and, and for goal setting, I'll bring some more forthcoming, but I just think it's exciting, everybody is demystifying AI, everybody is getting used to the fact that AI is here, and with partnership planning and sharing documentations from Google, as well as the NLC, I think that the municipalities will be able to have by the end of November, we will have a playbook to share, and all of this is for the benefit of all municipalities in the, in the United States to use, so I'm very excited about being part of this team.
Thanks, Ms. Farber.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add one thing to that, so as part of that process, Susan told me that all the representatives at National League of Cities Committee read this book called The Alignment Problem, so she shared it with me, and I read it, and if you can have a page-turner about AI, that book is it, and it's very informative.
Thank you for mentioning that, Google even uses that in terms of calling this whole thing alignment, as to how AI was evolved, how it was, generative AI is being used, and just the applications that are just basically in front of our eyes every day, even some of the examples we talked about today with the two software programs, that the Housing Department had mentioned, will have AI components in it, it will have opportunities to make efficiencies in the operations, all the logistics that they do for the landlords, as an example, and then we will see some workforce, force multipliers, as we call it, happening as well, so, it's here to stay, and I'm looking forward to Dubuque being amongst the first to embrace the applications that we can, so, thank you, Mike, for the shout-out on the book.
Ms. Rousell.
Thank you, I took the opportunity to attend the graduation ceremonies for the summer teen empowerment program at the Multicultural Family Center, and first of all, congratulations to all the students and parents, it was so impressive to hear of their accomplishments, but most of all, it was really neat to witness the wonderful relationships that were built between the students and their AmeriCorps leaders, there was just a lot of tears and a lot of joy, and it was just a wonderful experience, I was glad I could go, and I also attended the Greater Dubuque Development Annual Meeting, which is always motivating and a very impressive event, so there's always fun things to do in Dubuque.
Thanks, Ms. Rousell. Ms. Wethel.
I wanted to just mention, I had the privilege to meet with the Dubuque Black Men's Coalition members at Voices on July 22nd, Dale Campbell, filmmaker here in Dubuque, is making a film called Black Life on the Upper Mississippi River, and as part of that is interviewing individuals from our community and their experiences about, specifically in this case, being men of color, and what that experience is like, and so I asked to just sit and listen, and I really appreciated that, and look forward to the movie as it's made, on July 31st, last Wednesday, I had the privilege to go meet with the community at Mount Carmel Bluffs, learn about concerns that they have in my ward, and I always walk away having more questions that I need to answer for myself, they always challenge me to think outside the box, and they are a wealth of knowledge, both women religious and people who are now living there that are not women religious, so thank you for that invitation, and then on Saturday, attended the Back to School Bash, which was really hot, but the families were coming in like crazy, the kids had a blast, lots of area businesses, and sponsorship, and community organizations that contributed, I was there in part with the members of the Community Foundation to discuss school safety, and inquire into, with my hope to bring and lift up that topic of event, how can we reach out to families and children and ask for their opinions, and I had many great conversations, we had a sticker board that showed how safe parents felt their children were in school, and how safe children felt they were in school, and then took individual kind of comments about that, which I thought was really helpful and opened my eyes to a lot of things, but I had incredible feedback on our SROs, and I am just so proud of that program, and our officers that participate, the feedback from families, even in those children that had had an experience that was potentially a negative experience, the feedback was, but, the SROs were an incredible resource, they met with me, they met with the other family, they got back the bike, they, they really go out of their way and are so well-respected, and so, again, just as we go into goal-setting, what that priority is in our community, it's exponential, and the people who need it most really appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Wethel, Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, I was honored to give the welcome on behalf of our city to the baseball extravaganza on July 23rd at the Miracle League Complex, I tell you, it was baseball, apple pie, and hot dogs, and everything, it was such a great, beautiful day, and a beautiful event with beautiful people, and I just, that organization just exuded so much joy, I've heard that word several times, and it was all over the faces, and, and the conversations of the people that were there that day, again, the Miracle League, where their motto is, every child deserves a chance to play baseball, and it was just a fantastic event, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you bet. I got one more question, sure, I belong to American Mensa, and our Iowa-Illinois group does a Second Friday Dinner in various places, usually around the Quad Cities, and so I usually don't call, and they said, what if we took this on the road this month, so I said, what if you got to go to an art opening at the Art in the River exhibit in Dubuque, Iowa, for free, and then go to dinner, and so they said, okay, so, they're coming up here Friday, so everybody else, come down to Art in the River at 5:00 Friday, and learn what's new along the River Walk, there'll be a half a dozen people that are allegedly pretty smart, they're smart enough to come to Dubuque and see it. Definitely the standard, you know, another thing about this week I want to mention is tomorrow is the National Night Out, so I believe Jackson Park, am I correct on that? Yeah, Jackson Park tomorrow for the National Night Out, so another great event that happens every single year, so really appreciate that one, a couple of quick things for me, you know, I was honored to be asked by Congresswoman Hinson's staff to welcome her when she was here for an official event last week, and I, I really appreciated that opportunity to be able to talk about the importance of federal partnerships to the city of Dubuque, and that was a, a great chance to be able to do that, also, in, in terms of partnerships, we had a team from the American Flood Coalition here to talk with our staff last week, and they asked to meet with me just to, to catch up a little bit, if you recall, I, I took a trip to Washington DC earlier this year, on behalf of the American Flood Coalition, and they were, they're really getting a foothold in Iowa and working hard in our state to try and help with flood resources, especially from the federal government, so that was an important conversation, especially considering the amount of flooding that we've had, just the sheer amount of flooding that we've had in the state of Iowa this year, was I wrong about the location for the National Night Out, is it Comiskey?
We're not gonna use the word wrong.
Well, it's okay if I'm wrong.
We're gonna say it's at Comiskey Park.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much, I was hoping that I, we'd make sure that, so National Night Out tomorrow night is Comiskey Park, so lovely, lovely Comiskey Park. The final thing I'll say is just going back to what Ms. Rousell said about the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation Annual Meeting, you know, it was a really good annual meeting to be able to talk about how far we've come in this past year, but this week, we've got some really important news about the workforce in this region, so in our MSA, the number of workers working in this area is the highest it's ever been, ever, that's saying something, and the work that I think that you all, and we all are doing here, as community leaders, but the work especially that our partners in, our economic development partners, Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, Chamber of Commerce, everybody who's involved in all these different organizations, the, the work is meaningful, and it's doing something, so I'm, I'm really excited about where, where we sit, and it was, it was great news to get this week, okay. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Resnick. Oh, Mr. Sprank, did you have anything else to add, sorry, thank you, Mr. Resnick.
Uh, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, it, the National Night Out is tomorrow at Comiskey Park, unfortunately, I will not be attending, 'cause I'm on a vacation, but yeah, that was a very, that it's always a wonderful event, I'm sure it'll be packed with probably 200-plus people there attending, so come on down, the other things I wanted to mention about also, working with the Alpine Mobile Home Park folks, they're starting to have issues similar to our folks over at Table Mount, so they're working on forming a neighborhood association, and if folks want to know more, reach out to me, and I will gladly connect you with those neighbors that are trying to work on that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank, okay, we have a closed session, so I'll entertain a motion, please.
Chair, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that the city council go into closed session according to Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to discuss purchase or sale of real estate.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Jones, second by Ms. Rousell, for the record, the attorney the city council will consult with on issues to be discussed in closed session is City Attorney Corinna Brumwell, Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passed at seven zero, we are in closed session.